Good evening and welcome to the Sohegan Cooperative School Board Meeting for February first. It's six oh four P M. Thank you for everyone's patience. We had to fix the audio before we get started. And we will start with public input as we don't have anyone else in the room. Is there anyone online?
There is one person online.
All right, if they're interested in speaking, please raise your hand and we'll promote you to speaker. Give them a moment to see.
No hand up.
No hand up. Okay, well, we will come back to the second part of public input later in the meeting. Um, so we'll go into our curriculum presentation on the music program with Carrie Nason.
Arts and visual arts.
Excellent. Excellent. Yep. And when you guess before you get started, make sure you press the button in the front to turn it green. Perfect.
Yeah, how are you? We need our props.
See, it's very, very applicable.
Yeah, it's not as exciting as a theater prop, though, sorry. Um, as that is uh booting up, I'll introduce myself. My name is Carrie Nason. I teach choir and theater at Sohegan High School. This is my third year at Sohegan and my second year as the I L T representative for visual and performing arts. And that's it. That's my presentation. Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Do it after the email thing. You never know what you said to me in an email. Oh, that's not it. Well. Yeah, it's it's coming. Come on.
It's really thinking hard about it. Oh, there it is. Great.
We're rolling.
Okay. Oh, should I like, should we have a signal like I'm ready to go on next?
Hey, move it.
Okay, so um, this is an overview of the classes that we offer at Sohegan within the visual and performing arts departments. As you can see, there is a lot going on, a lot of great stuff. We have um five faculty members, which include myself, Jim Wickham, who is the band director, Liz Goslin, um, who teaches visual art, Steph Fritz, also visual art, and Audra Saunders, who teaches visual art and media arts in our video production courses. Visual Arts has worked hard to create a sequence of classes from introductory level through intermediate and into advanced courses. The cornerstones of the performing arts are our music ensembles, choir and band, but we also have uh many options for students who might not already play an instrument or be interested in performing in choir. Um, but they still have an interest in learning about music or theater. We also offer um extracurricular activities, which are made of students from across the whole student body and are open to anybody interested. Ding. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our summer work that happened this past summer. We were um really fortunate to be granted two summer workdays last summer as a full department, so all five of us. During this time, the five of us met to connect with each other and welcome Jim into the fold um to with the intention of revising our introductory classes, primarily the visual arts experience class, intro to pop music and theater one. We were able to create a unified vision of these classes to provide um access and opportunity for all students, which is a vision that permeates into all of our other classes as well. These classes provide a low floor and a high ceiling in our respective mediums, which allows students to explore things they might not otherwise be um exposed to, but also allows students to thrive and dig into things that they're really interested in. These days also provided some crucial time for Steph, Liz and Audra to work together to align their curriculums because they are the they are now currently teaching the same course. Um, and meanwhile, I was able to connect with an onboard Jim as our new band director and able to help him understand the curriculum and the nuances of our performance schedule. Additionally, I was granted a summer day to conceive and outline the curriculum for my course, uh my new course, Theater Two. This allowed me time to research materials and experiences for students in this class to um as a continuation of Theater One. And um I was really lucky to be granted this time because I'm it's paying off now as I've taught this um as a second semester course. So I'm glad I had that time. We also had a day for um combos, so Jim and our previous band director were able to come together to kind of work on that curriculum and see how that vision could have played out. And um Film Seminar also received a summer day to work together because they were a new partnership um for that class. Ding. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some notable updates for us um as a department. Um, so I'd like to highlight just a couple of things. So first, one thing that has been really important to me, um, but also to our department and to our school is increasing our communication. So um I've implemented a biweekly performing arts newsletter, which highlights upcoming performance dates, report times, what to wear, where to be, what we're doing. Um, that also uh and some pictures that highlight what we're what we're up to. Um, and that goes out to all families um in any of our classes. So it includes our ensembles, but also anybody in a performing arts class gets that newsletter. It also goes out in the um Sohegan Scoop. It is linked on our Facebook page, so it's pretty accessible. Um, this is in addition to our regular emails and Google Classroom notifications. Um, and I'm also very appreciative of Michelle Paul's management of our Sohegan Instagram account. She's super good at just pushing our information and reposting some of the theater club and um music department information. So that's also really helpful. We continue to encourage our presence in the community through different town events. Some examples of this are K to twelve art exhibition at the Amherst Town Library, the choir singing at the Amherst and Mount Vernon tree lightings, and um our presence at many different patriotic exercises in the towns. In December, we were fortunate enough to bring our students on a tour to all of the elementary schools. And then the middle school came to us and we performed a thirty minute um demonstration and little holiday sing along concert for them. We have focused on fostering inclusive classrooms and um providing many entry points for all students. In both visual and performing arts, we have a wide representation of our student body, serving students from um the Transitions Program all the way up through um Latin honors distinctions. We are um hoping to provide as many experiences as possible um and making sure that everybody does feel welcome. So that's really important to us as a department. And uh fostering that inclusive and welcoming environments helps the students return year after year as well. We've had a few E L O opportunities for students to expand beyond Sohegan, including a theater production E L O, some photography work and sound recording with an outside um sound recording studio a few years back. We've increased student involvement by providing new courses designed to reach students that are not in traditional music ensembles, primarily in the theater classes, combos and intro to pop music. These classes and revisions were a direct result of a survey that we had administered two years ago to the student body searching for um input on what to offer at our schools and what kids thought was missing within the program of studies. So those three classes especially were results of that survey and um they've been perceived really well and they're a lot of fun. So there was an overwhelming response of interest in theater and music at Sohegan. In our classes, we now focus on our we have been focusing on cultivating independence and leadership by empowering students to become section leaders, student directors, and giving them the gift of choice. Um, oftentimes, our assignments allow a wide runway for students to be able to choose how to demonstrate mastery of a competency. Our ceramics program has grown immensely thanks to the support and resources that we've been allotted. Um, there are two levels of ceramics right now. Ceramics one focuses primarily on the science and structures of clay building and glaze and firing and um hand building, sorry, with clay. And then ceramics two introduces the the wheel and more advanced techniques that kids have been experimenting with. Um, Steph has also participated in a lot of research and workshops in her personal practice to ensure that students are getting the best experience they can, and she's really doing an awesome job um with that ceramics program. A major revision to our offerings this year is that film seminar and video production um now count towards an art credit. So students taking those classes are able to fill that art credit that way, um since they are now um in alignment with our national standards. And lastly, we focused on promoting more collaboration among our department members, especially through events like our winter exhibition of learning, which you'll learn about. Come on, Steve. Okay. Oh, I was like waiting. That's okay. Um, so one of the events that I really want to highlight, we do a lot of events, but one of the the strongest ones here at Sohegan in terms of collaboration is the Winter Exhibition of Learning. Um, this year was the second iteration of this event. Um, and it's it's a really big lift, but it's so worth it. Um, the philosophy of this event is to provide an authentic performance opportunity for our musicians, but also to provide an audience for our student artists that they might not get if they just were to have some standalone event. The structure of this event is that um it starts at six P M. with a gallery walk. The students are stationed around their artwork to be able to explain their process and talk about their artwork with anyone who wants to know more about it. Then our concert starts at seven, which features a cappella choir and band and a combined finale mandatory fun sing along at the end. Um, just before into intermission, we premiere a documentary that what or premiered a documentary that was made by the video production class, which covers how the event came together and includes um students talking about their artistic processes and clips of the rehearsal process as well. The marketing class made a brand um and then um sent the schemes along to the advertising class, who made the, excuse me, marketing materials and posters that we used to uh promote the event. And uh, this is one of my favorite events of the year. Like I said, it's really special because it does promote community among students and colleagues, and it invites the um anyone, the community and parents um and family members to experience some of the great work that we are able to accomplish here. Um, we are hoping to align another exhibition in March using the popularity of the school musical to provide another audience to student art uh to view student artwork. And if not, then we will definitely have some artwork presented at our spring concert in May. Here are some um pretty awesome pictures. Some of them artworks in progress, but this is what students in art classes have been working on either since the exhibition or they just have not exhibited this work yet. Um, my personal favorite is the eyes. They're in the annex. And if you have a chance, they're a little creepy, but like it's really cool work and the artist statement is really powerful as well. Here are some um recent happenings of the fall season, fall into winter with the performing arts. Um, we had our choir sang at the rainiest clause for a cause day, I think, ever. Um, we had our fall play, radium girls, jazz night. Oh, it says jazz night two. It should say jazz night one. Jazz night two is coming up. Um, classical all state auditions and a picture of our elementary school tour that is at Wilkins, but we were able to go to all three in one day. So moving forward, um, we have a few areas of focus to explore and to examine as we move forward as a department. One, um, we would like to advocate for increased K to twelve alignment, particularly in the performing arts. Um, we've worked hard to connect with music teachers from A M S, Clark Wilkins and M V B S, and we would like to continue to support our students through fostering that connection. Um, and we would love to have a present throughout the entire S A U. We would also like to increase student participation in our programs, both in our courses and as audience members. Right now, our audiences are primarily parents and family members, which is great, but we would also love to share our work with students a little more frequently. Uh, we would like to continue to be a presence in our community through events in the town um and at other schools. And lastly, I'd like to continue providing authentic performance opportunities both in and beyond the walls of Sohegan. So we do have some upcoming events. As you can see, we're very busy people. We are, we very rarely just sit idly and like wait for, oh, it'll be easier next time. It never is. Uh, maybe in June and July, but we always have something exciting going on. So if you want to, you can take a picture of that, or I can send you our newsletter with all of our events on there. Um, but we hope to see you in the audiences of any of our events so you can experience the joy and impact that this department is able to offer. I feel very lucky to work here um and to work with the students that we all serve. And I'm very passionate about sharing how awesome they are all the time. Um, so I thank you very much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Yep, so our small ensemble and large ensemble concert um was formerly known as our pops concert, but after doing two iterations of trying to jam a concert and get ready between the end of winter break and then beginning, it's it's right in the middle of February. That timeframe in the last two years that I've been working here has been tricky with due to illnesses and absences and all sorts of other stuff, and it's only really six weeks of prep time. Um, so we kind of revision the event this year to include um some projects that we do inquire. We have an arrangement project where kids are able to kind of group into groups of, I think, three to six was my limitation this year. Um, they choose a song, they rearrange it for their own ensemble, and then they are gonna present it at that concert. We're also going to be doing two um hopefully numbers as our full choir. And the band is also going to have a few feature a few different um small ensemble groups with and the typical band concert. And Jazz Night Two, um, we have compact big band coming. Um, and we're featuring, we are featuring our Sohegan groups and.
National?
Yes, sorry. Oh, yeah. So we invite different area high schools to come perform as well. And that in the um May Jazz Night Three will feature all high school groups and a cappella, maybe? Definitely. If they don't know that yet, but there we are.
They just found out. What other questions? Comments?
I I have three.
John, you have questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I was wondering if um, thank you for the presentation, by the way. I was wondering if you had any data about student participation rates and whether they um, you know, increased or decreasing over time and in what areas where interests um lie and where those have been moving.
That's a good question. I don't have specific numbers right now. Um, I will let you know that my numbers inquire have increased incrementally over the last three years. Um, and with the addition of Theater One and Theater Two, those classes have both been able to run successfully each semester since we started that. I don't know where to look. You're an ominous voice of above. But they have increased and have retention. So Theater Two is an extension of Theater One. That class is um designed for students who succeeded in Theater One and want more. Um, and we've also been able to kind of re-invite kids to take music theory and composition, which had been kind of dormant for a few years. Um, it is kind of a hard sell sometimes because like who wants to learn music theory today? Um, which can be a really difficult content uh content for kids, but it's likely go it ran last year. It's gonna run, it runs this year and it's likely gonna run next year based on the conversations I had at our electives fair. Um, and in terms of combos, combos is also a new class, and that was able to run either two or three sections this year. Um, so we have had increased involvement and those courses are really designed to access kids who I like to call the bedroom guitar players, who might be like sitting and watching YouTube and jamming together, but like might not have a place in a, they don't play the trumpet or they're not going to be in the traditional jazz or concert band. Um, but if you're interested, we can get numbers.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, one of the, one of the things that I learned as we were putting this together is that um twenty percent of all students in the state of New Hampshire who sat for the three D A P art exam went to Sohegan.
Wow.
So it's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Um, so uh I think, I think uh the new courses that Carrie mentioned, and when I say new, I either mean this year or in the last two years, so theater combos, film sem, all of those uh classes are becoming um highly subscribed. So uh, so it's it's filling a need and we're, we're really, really happy about it.
So I have a question. Have we um, to encourage the like the eighth graders that are moving up, to encourage them to stay with bands, stay with choir, explore the new things, or what's the conversation going with the students there and the families there to say, we've got good things going here?
Actually, our C O P this year basically is revolved around retention and recruitment. Um, so one thing that we've been focusing on, having that elementary tour and middle school tour, I think this year was really crucial um just to show kids what we do here and how it can be different. Um, with the older grade levels, you can do different music and different instrumentation. Um, but also Jim and I are planning on going to the middle school just to show face and meet the kids. I've done, I've done that before and just kind of met them and done some range checks and just kind of like sit and warm up with them just to get them familiar. Um, and then going to their concerts as well and inviting them to ours is a nice tactic.
Um, also, we have eighth grade parent night coming up next week, so that's um, we have, you know, Carrie and we have invited uh student musicians to come and play or sing. Um, so that's another big kind of showcase, another draw for us. And then in terms of the visual arts realm, um, in the spring, as kids are preparing for the A P, the A P art tests are no joke. They are quite extensive. Um, and the portfolios that students are expected to present by the end of the year, um, it's a lot. And so our uh art teachers from across the district have actually gotten together to do mock exams with students. So that has provided a level of um, a le- a level of co- of, you know, cross building collaboration among the art teachers that has been really helpful. Um, because obviously we know art, uh visual arts particularly, we want to make sure that it's, as Carrie said, it's a really inclusive place with a low floor and a high ceiling. And so art is a place where everyone can go and feel comfortable and accomplished. And also, it can be a very rigorous experience for those who want it. And so um by having the art teachers from M V and from Clark Wilkins there in the room while we're working on that, where we're looking at that student work, it's been really valuable. Fantastic. Yeah. Thank you.
And the art teachers are observing each other. They've they've done other schools and observed them. But that note peer visitation is a pretty strong strategy for collaboration. Pretty cool stuff.
Excellent. Other questions?
Uh, one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Um, well, and I had another one, but was answered really about quality of participation. But I think that discussion, low floor, high ceiling, you know, rigor at the at the high level, it's but it's for everybody at the same time. I mean, it really answers that question, so I appreciate that. Um, my final question is, um, I'm wondering the extent to which visual arts or in performing arts he is already or could be expanded into um clubs.
So right now, we have um, we have two performing arts teachers who, me and Jim, and we run a cappella and jazz band, and I'm also the face of the theater club, which is pretty involved. Right now, we're doing Beauty and the Beast. Um, goes up in March, shameless plug. Um, so at this point in time, adding more performing arts clubs is a lot, I think. Um, but in terms of art, I think there will be some opportunity for after school participation, formally or informally. I know Steph always has kids in the room after school working on either projects that they're working on in class or beyond just things that they're trying to learn themselves. So it might be a little more informal than a club, um, but it's definitely something that is happening and really great to see.
Yeah, I think you'd be hard pressed to be in the annex art room and not find kids there working, whether or not they're assigned to be in the class at that time. I think particularly with the addition of um with our expansion of our ceramics program, particularly, um, students really are enjoying it. And because I don't know if anyone's ever thrown pottery before, it's so stinking hard. Um, it really keeps them engaged and coming back. And it's like been, it's been so fun to watch students through that productive struggle because it's hard, but the every day they're like, okay, I'm gonna get them to make this bowl today. Um, so that's been really great. Yep.
I'm sorry, it just occurred to me, one follow up on that. Do the um maybe the visual arts or or performing arts, particularly like with uh stage building and things like that, are are those students um uh, do they have access to the maker space or is there any collaboration between that um in terms of, you know, just tools to be able to use to make art?
We have um our art class, I think it's advanced art is going to have a lull in February where their lull is going to be filled with making our uh stained glass piece for Beauty and the Beast. So that's already in the works. Um, and all of our sets are built, they're overseen by adults when it comes to like cutting and measuring things, of course, but kids have a ton of ownership in building sets and painting and theater especially, um, which is really great to see. We have a student stage manager who has, I've watched her grow from freshman year, now she's a junior. And I'm already like, what are we gonna do without her next year? But luckily, she has some uh underlings that she's kind of grooming a little bit. Um, but they're, they're really involved in that as well. Um, so we're working on more collaboration with art in terms of painting especially, but.
Um, that's great. And has there been any use of the maker space over at the A M S building to to assist with whatever the creations and visions of the artist is?
At this time, it's not been a need, but I think uh, I think as, you know, we continue to expand, I think it could become a need. Um, and then I also think uh, once folks it it build awareness, right? As Jim and Carrie, you know, Jim is new and he's helping a lot with sets. I think as they kind of acclimate more, I think there's definitely um room to be doing that.
Great, thanks Dana.
Yes, so um, I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to the administration here about how much I am in awe of what you do on a daily basis. Um, I want to thank you for agreeing to work here. Um, and it it's a huge compliment to not only you and and what you bring to the table, but the students are better for it. Um, when I take a look at the amount of time and effort that you put in on a daily basis, most of your peers go home at the end of the day. You're here till nine o'clock at night on a regular basis. Mister Wickham and you are in Keene, New Hampshire, doing a three day kind of celebration of of song and singing and band. Most of your peers are not doing that stuff. And so the fact that you go way above and beyond what is asked of you is something that I, as a community member, am extremely appreciative of. So thank you for that. Um, in in addition to that, I want to add that what you've done to professionalize, I guess you could say, the 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 performing arts sort of element of this 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 institution over the last three years is really second to none. Um, the fact that we have a honors program in chorus, the fact that we now have a theater one, theater two program, um, the the chorus is 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 singing in Mount Vernon, which I am extremely appreciative of, and everybody knows how much I've been asking for that. Um, you know, the fact that you're ingrained in 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 the town of Mount Vernon is extremely appreciative. Um, I know I said to to Mister Barry that people are coming up to me saying thank you. Uh, and and I really want to make sure that you understand how thankful people out there in the community are because they tell me. And your efforts definitely do not go unnoticed. Um, a couple of quick things I do want to ask real fast in terms of what you guys need from a support standpoint, because this division of our our institution is growing. It really is. And it's growing a heck of a lot more than it has in the past. What else do you need uh to support that growth? And more importantly, from a program offering standpoint, I know we're working on the curtain uh on the stage, that second one. Miss Grund and I talked about that after one of our things last year, and we were able to free up the resources with with uh unreserved fund balance last year to do that. That's gonna be done. What else is kind of out there? I know the sound thing, I would love to get that back in the sound booth, um, but what else?
Yeah. Um, well, I could someday give you a wish list, I'm sure. Um, but I know that like for right now, the best answer to that question is just to support our events. Um, and I know like coming to events, they know they're late and yeah, 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 but they're really, really well done. Um, if I say so myself, but also like the kids really do step up and they do an awesome job performing. When we say low floor, high ceiling, that might lead to like, eh, they're just okay, but like they really are exceptional. Um, the literature that the kids are reading in all of the music classes is pretty sophisticated for high school, um, can especially considering we're non-audition program. Um, and I think that really our our main support can come from you just attending events.
I was gonna say you want that in it.
You just have to correct the spring gala date. That one's not right, but uh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know I just told Memorial Day somewhat time around there.
That'd be great.
Sure.
I I would add to what Carrie said, you know, we did put things in the budget this year. that were specific to performing in visual arts. And so supporting the budget is a great way to support these programs. When we talked about the, our ability to grow ceramics, that was because we were able to buy, I think we're up to 16 pottery wheels, right? And Steph still has to kind of structure the class in real intentional ways so that not, because we still don't have one to one for wheels. That, that, that would be a lot, but you know, supporting the, the budget is a great way to support programs.
If I may ask one more, in, in terms of where you and Mr. Wickham, I mean, I put you on the spot. Where do you guys envision the program being five years from now? So like, what would be a five year vision of what the performing arts offering is here?
I'd love to continue on the path we're going of upward growth. I know that the middle school numbers right now for band are like eighth grade coming into ninth grade are a low number. But when you look back in our recent history, that's the year that I think was supposed to be their beginning band year, or when they were in fifth grade, they didn't have band because of COVID. So that particular grade is a low number for band especially. But sixth and seventh grade band have, I think, over a hundred students involved. So there's a lot coming up, which is awesome. Or coming over, I should say, they're not coming up. We're all on the same level here. And in terms of choir, I would love to see, I'm, my goal is to have 50 students in choir. I know that might be kind of insane to some of you. But I can do it. I can make it work. And I think that having that grand scheme of a choir can then be really targeted to have us, some small groups that might be a little bit like, they might do a cappella more challenging, or they might have other different ensembles within the large ensemble. And then in terms of collaboration, I'd love to continue and increase more collaboration across the department with more inclusion of visual arts. And like you, you see artwork all over this building, which is really great. I'd love to continue to have that and have music also kind of aligned with those tasks. And in terms of theater, I mean, someday I would love to, I, I music direct and direct, which I will tell you, it's really hard to do. It's really a two person job and I've been doing it the last three years. So I'm looking forward to collaborating with other music teachers in the district to have, hire either a music director or a director so that we can kind of expand those responsibilities. That's something that has been prominent, more this year, kind of my hesitation towards doing the beast that is Beauty and the Beast. But it's worth it. So I'm not, you know, there's no complaints. It's just that is a lot. It's a big job. So that's something I'm looking forward to.
I know Anna, you had one.
So my, my very last thing, because I honestly, I love, I love these departments. I've always been a huge fan of the band. You know, my daughter was involved in the plays and the, you know, lighting and sound aspects. And so anyways, huge fan of the department. What, what is done? Cause I too would love to see more community involvement. And I don't know what that means, but you know, hey, do you want to spend Valentine's Day coming and, you know, for Valentine's Day, come see our large and small ensemble concert? Or, but how, how is this information pushed out to the community who's not getting? Like the Sohegan scoop, I really appreciate it. It's on the first page now, right up there with all the others. It used to be kind of hidden, but that got changed a year and a half ago.
Well, Paul.
That's awesome. But how does, how, like what efforts are being done to try to increase that community involvement? Cause I, I think it'd be great if we had more people who weren't just the parents. I mean, I still come back to the plays and I love them and I'll keep doing that.
Thank you. I think the newsletter is just one way, but it's not the only way. I understand and recognize that. We do have a Facebook group now that is new as of this year. That's, it's Sohegan Music Department, I think, or Sohegan Performing Arts Department. But you do have to join because you have to answer questions because we don't just want any like, you know, random people in there. We want to make sure there's a level of like, how are you connected to the program is the question to kind of filter people out. But that is another way. We also, I've made Facebook events and put them on the Amherst Town page, which I know is pretty active. That's a goal to keep doing it often to me lies lower on my priority list to like, get the risers on the stage, get the microphones all set. Oh yeah, post it on Facebook. So that's something that I've been working on. But those are a few ways. And then also we have partnered with marketing and advertising classes. This year we have another business teacher who is really interested in helping promote events and using the students to make marketing materials and they kind of have a contest to like, see which one wins, which, which poster I like the most basically. And then they are pushing it out using their COP, which is to advertise their, and, and involve more advertising for our school events.
I think, I think your, your question about, you know, how, what are we doing to engage the community is so astute. Because I was having this, this same conversation with Kelly Briley today about attendance at some of our athletic events. Because our, you know, Friday night football game, yeah, everybody's going to come out. But a Tuesday night varsity girls basketball game, it's mostly parents, right? And family members. And so how, what, that's, it's, it's, it's not limited to how do we get folks to come out and support kind of our performing arts, but it's all the things that the kids are doing right now. And so, so we're, you know, we highlight, we give it the shout out to Michelle Paul, because I think she's helping us kind of rejuvenate and bring new life to our socials, which is really great. But there's more work to be done, for sure.
With more students too involves more people in the audiences as well. Our audiences aren't like just a spare amount of people this, the last two years. Like they have been relatively full looking, but of course, like in that regard, more is more. So I appreciate your comments and.
Great. Anything else?
Just one follow up to that. I think in the presentation, you showed how graphic design students had worked on a poster. Is that something that, and you might've said this, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If, if that's something that goes out like in the library and the town hall and things like that?
In, yes, in, that is the hope. We're working on timeline and making sure that we're not over saturating by over advertising. Like here's this thing four months away. Like that's not going to be effective advertising. But aligning our schedules with deadlines and assignments in classes, sometimes it's become, it's a little tricky sometimes, but we're working on it. And right now I do have a poster ready to go for the solo and small ensemble concert. So I usually aim for two weeks. I don't want to over saturate the situation and say like, you know, in terms of advertising, but that's one thing we're working on is making sure that we have visuals out to like the homestead and molten and black forest, like areas around.
Yeah, the communication's been something we've all been kind of talking about, how, how do we get everything out there? And we, there's ideas kind of.
Even the little postage stamp one was very appealing. Like I was like, oh, I'm sorry. I missed that now. And then I, I, I can't wait to see what you make for Beauty and the Beast because I'm sure that will be kind of.
Come see the stained glass window.
Yeah.
Well, I know I came to the winter concert that had the whole art experience and I was really appreciative of the work that goes behind that. I mean, the, the students put a lot of thought, they had to write up why they did that. I understood they had the eight pieces, how to defend their artwork afterwards and how, how the whole process went. And just to combine with it, with the whole music program, I thought was brilliant and a great, great idea. So I can't wait to see how we can bring more community members in once we figure out the whole communication piece. Yeah. So thank you. I think that's it. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you both for coming. We greatly appreciate it. And hopefully your practices or your rehearsals done and you can go home this evening.
Well, no, I'm going to our act one off book room right now, so.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay, back to our agenda, our consent agenda. We have the draft minutes for December 7th that were revised, the December 20th, January 4th and January 16th meetings. Are there any, any, any revisions or comments on the minutes?
Just a comment on the draft revision. Thank you, Danae, for putting in what I had requested. I read through it. It, it looks like I remember there was just a couple of ifs that maybe should be is's, just a couple of Scrivener's errors. Not too many, just a few. I don't know if you want to clean that up if you get a chance, but otherwise they look really good.
But I think we're just going to go ahead and approve those if that's all it is. John, you're okay with that?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And then I, there are other policies in there, there, let me see if I can find the right page. There's a list of policies.
Can I say one thing on that?
Yes, please go ahead. So, so these are the ones we reviewed last time. The only thing I wanted to point out is on the list itself, starting on page 46 of the PDF. ILJ KEC is still listed. It is not part of the rest of the packet. And it has been pulled and is back at policy. John gave some changes yesterday on language that we'll review at our next meeting. I think that was done last night. So I just wanted to point out that that's not actually in there. ILJ.
ILJ.
I looked for it repeatedly. I'm like, I've lost my mind. It's gone.
Yes. So what I see is there's approval of EBBC slash JLCE, EH, EHB, GB, GBA, JFAB, JFAM, JICK, JLCA, JLCB and KFA. And then there's also rescinds EGA, EH dash E, JLCE, AKFD. Okay. So are there any comments about any of those policies? All right. Hearing none. Can I have, do we have to rescind the policies separate from approving the ones that are in the consent agenda? I think they have to be two separate. The rescind would have to be a separate motion.
Well, it's already on the docket as a rescind anyway.
It is.
So.
Everyone's okay?
Would rescind it.
All right. All right. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Guley Zimmerman, second by Ms. Peters. Any other discussion?
Just do we have to mention in our motion that the one in the consent agenda is no longer there? Or is it enough that we mentioned it?
Well, it's not even in the packet and it's not.
It's on the packet, but it's listed in the table.
Yeah, without any comments on it. Yeah. So. So I'll amend my motion to accept the consent agenda with the clarification that IJL KEC is listed on page 46, but not actually part of the policies that are getting acted on at this time.
And I will second the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on the, on the amendment to the motion? All right. We'll have to do a roll call vote since John is remote, which I just realized I never like to watch John. If he is alone and unable to be here.
Yes, I am alone and without vehicle, so unable to attend.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's do a roll call vote.
Hey you, yes.
Guley Zimmerman, yes.
Peters, yes.
Glover, yes.
Glover, yes. Thank you very much. Reports received. Principals report. Dana, is there anything you want to highlight?
I would like to add, so when I submitted this last week, it was not yet February 1st. So I have some updated enrollment numbers. So we actually had three, three move-ins and one move out. So we're up to 691.
Okay.
As of today.
Yep. I said all that without the green button. Yep. Great. Yep. 691. I don't have anything else right now, but I'm happy to answer questions on anything that stood out or?
All right. I want to have questions. The only question I have regarding the observations, I know you're like at 45% complete. How are you feeling on that? And do you think, it seems like it could be low.
We, it is, it is low for this time of year. We're down and we're down an evaluator.
That's what I thought.
We've also, I think, as we've shared, I think particularly my, my focus has been pulled in other directions for the first half of this year. I think Mike will tell you that that, you know, having worked with me long enough, I don't like to be low. I like to be high. That being said, I still feel very confident in our ability to get it done by our timelines. So right now all of our non-continuing contract staff, so non-tenured staff, we will have all of those wrapped up prior to February break, which is the goal. And so I expect that for the March board report, you'll see a significant increase in the percentage complete. And then we have, we have still quite a bit of time to get through everybody else. So I think we, we will get it done, but it has been more challenging this year.
Okay. You know, I think I'd, I'd love to have a conversation about, so that I know you had a little thing in there about the honors courses and the embedded.
Yep.
And just love to hear more about how the, what you read and how the, that particular school embedded their honors compared to our programs. And what is our participation rate in our honors program?
Yeah. So in some, in some, in some, I think you'll see in some disciplines, it's really high and in other disciplines, it's really low. And there's certainly questions to be asked about what's causing that. Honors is a perennial topic of conversation for us. And I don't know, I, it, we haven't gotten it right yet. I think every year we're making strides. I think what was interesting about that, that, a lot of interesting stuff that came out of that article, because a lot of the things that they ended up grappling with are the same things that we are also struggling with.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting. So thanks for including that. Anyone else?
Can I ask?
I have a, I have a, a list of questions, but.
All right. Let me ask my really quick one, then you can have the floor, John. Students versus staff basketball, who won?
Students.
Okay.
It was, it was very, very fun. So it was put on by NHS as a fundraiser yesterday. It was, I don't know, 10 staff and then five, five students from varsity boys, five students from varsity girls. And then our entire unified team played. It was really great. It was really fun. Everyone needs a little bit of practice. I was talking to Officer Blais about that today. She said it would have helped if they had had one practice.
That's awesome. Yeah. Cool. John, go ahead.
Okay, I've got a few, so just bear with me. Just wanted to say, I, you know, I think you're right in your, in your opening paragraph, you talk about now being the official shift towards looking ahead for the next academic year. You know, we're setting the course for the future and we're making our collective investment in the success of our students. To me, that is the reason why we should, to the extent we can, continue looking at formally pushing our, our elections back as far as we can reasonably do so, so that, because now if this is what you're saying it is, this is the time we should be really looking at our budget for next year, not back in September. But I just wanted to make that comment. Maybe that's something this board can continue to noodle on in the future. But the questions for the entry, structured entry process, these individual meetings that you're doing with students, these are students in eighth grade that you're meeting with?
No, nope. They're, they're current, current Sohegan students.
Then what's the entry piece of the process then?
It's my entry. So I, I have been the principal of Sohegan High School for about six months.
I understand.
But it's been, it's been, it's been a short six months. So, so part of my goal was my entry, which is still ongoing, is, is talking with kids about their experience of, of being a student here in the building.
Got you. Okay. That, that makes sense. The data wise process, it sounds, I mean, really excellent. And you're doing it with the ninth grade team. Do we know if, if this process is being done in other grades, seventh, eighth, earlier grades? So that there can be some kind of, you know, sort of system wide harmony and in terms of what's being done to tackle the, the challenges that we see in the data?
So I am particularly jazzed about our work with DataWise. It's something that we began looking, exploring together as a group of interested people in our COP last year, and we, we've continued it this year. It's, you know, it's, it's a structured way to go about school improvement. There's, it's, it's, it's one of many ways to go about it. So I, I expect that in other places, they might be using a different, a different structure, a different system. We really like this system so far because of the cyclical nature, because you go into it knowing that it's never done. Because of, you know, steps seven through nine are all about examining what you did and then jumping back into the cycle. And so as a school, Matt McDonald has been leading this work with our ninth grade team teachers so that they can engage in the full process around math and literacy. So that they can engage in the full process, um, around math and literacy, um, and then our group. Um, our, our communities of practice group that's still studying the process, right now. Um, we just determined that, uh, our, our end-of-year goal is going to be focused on step five of this process. Which is examining instruction, um. With a specific student, uh, learning goal in mind based in data. And so the idea is, we, you know, everyone at South Heagan will be able to employ, start employing this process next year. So, um. Hopefully, we continue to, to, to like the results of, of this work, and be very happy to share it with others throughout the district. But, um, right now, it's been a lot about us learning the process and seeing how it can work for us. I hope that helped, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I, I wouldn't have expected at this early to be. You know, bubbled out elsewhere, maybe it's, in that way, it's kind of a pilot test.
Yep.
But I'm really hoping it's successful, and that it can help. Other students in other grades, and especially those that are matriculating up into the high school, you know, that's been an issue.
Yep.
Um, thank you.
So, so John, to the, the system-wide point, all schools, uh, use data. And analyze data at, at certain grade levels, so it looks differently in grades five, six, and Amherst than it does in, uh, seven, eight. Because of the data that they're looking at, and as we talked about over the summer, you know, we have internal data that we use quite a bit, and. Uh, Dana referenced it in her report, and it's referenced, uh, and it's used at, uh, AMS at, at their grade levels with the NWA. And, but we also take a look at SAS data, local assessments, there's other data points, and they have dated. Versions of data teams throughout the SAU. Um, is it something that, you know, we are trying to look at a little bit more, uh, intentionally? As far as, you know, teething out what we use for growth, and what we use for effectiveness? That is a, a shift that's happening throughout SAU thirty-nine in all three districts. Um, um, you know, this is the model that, uh, the South Heagan High School is, is comfortable with. And there's other models being used throughout there, and, and there's evidence of that, of the data dashboard, you can see that, and, and that's. Used throughout the schools, you know, for effectiveness, and then there's internal processes that we haven't really discussed up to this point. But there are presentations coming for grades four, six, and eight. You know, at, at a later point, um, and we're determining if that's going to be at the SAU board level, or is that going to be at the individual board level? We're just not there yet, and that will encompass more of this internal data that we're using throughout the district. So, uh, that's kind of how I would answer that question, and, uh, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
What I would, what I would love to do is, uh, maybe by the end of this year, have Matt McDonald and some ninth grade teachers come and talk about their experience. Um, I think it would be really valuable, so.
I'd look forward to that, yes.
Alright.
Um. I, I have more, but if, so that bite will do, they can jump in.
I think you're the one person with questions, go for it.
Okay, um, you have the, in the MTSS, a couple of things, this, the de-escalation training. Um, it sounds great, I just was wondering if that was triggered by some events, or was that just sort of a proactive step? To be prepared for something that might happen?
Yeah, it's a, it's part of a new statute, so it's a new required training for all educators in the state of New Hampshire. Not triggered by any event at our school, but I think triggered by, you know, the mental health crisis that we know adolescents are experiencing.
Yeah. And the attendance, um, concerns, I, just, I wondered to know a couple of things. Whether the attendance was a matter of like whole day non-attendance, or, or just certain periods of the day, like where the, the trend was, and. If this was kind of a new issue, a, a worse than, a better than, or kind of same as the past, it's just getting some, some attention now, whereas maybe before it wasn't getting attention.
Yep, I, it's, it is getting attention now, and I think it's going to continue to get attention from us, uh, right now, it's a full-day issue. Um, you know, we certainly have, um, we have, you know, things that we deal with during the school day, you know, like. Typically, class cuts or things like that, but, um, MTS, our SST team has been focused on, um, full-day attendance. Um, and, you know, helping students get to the building, and helping parents understand kind of. When their kids are here, when they're not here, I think sometimes maybe, you know, they're, they're losing track, that this is the eleventh time your kid has missed school. Today, how can we, this year, how can we help you? Um, so, uh, so, uh, full day, yes, it's getting a lot of attention, I think it will continue to get a lot of attention.
Okay, great. Um, the attendance, you, you updated it, I was wondering, have you, and I think in the past, you had kind of had, if you knew, you would kind of say, oh, the. Went to private school, or moved out of the district, or, or, I was wondering if you had any insights as to, you know. Why we're, we're down to six eighty-nine, and now back up to, so it looks like there were three in and one out net, or something like that?
Three in, one out, I, I, I absolutely will get that, it's just Galen updated this today for me, and I wasn't around, so I don't. I don't know where the one out went to, but I will do that.
Good, thanks.
Hey, John, I'm extremely confident in the last eighteen months that that data has been produced to this board multiple times. About where our eighth graders, as they transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, and why they, they, they choose to go do different places, and. And I don't think that's a direct indicator of why enrollment is where it's at, I do think, um, what people are, are. Need to get used to, public school, uh, attendance is a volatile thing right now in New Hampshire. Because there's multiple different pathways to educate your child, and, uh, so we have people, uh, that. Start the year, homeschool, come in for a couple of months, decide that they're going to go back to homeschool, we have people who come, you know. To, from private schools to come in for a moment, and then they go back to private schools or vice versa. Uh, people move quite a bit right now, uh, a little bit more than they did, you know, five, seven years ago, uh, they, a little more transient in New Hampshire. Uh, so I just feel like there's a lot of reasons why enrollment numbers fluctuate. Um, you know, while you get, you know, a five to seven percent dip over the course of two or three months. Especially in Southern New Hampshire, when there's a lot of different ways to kind of educate your, your child, and it's, it's really parent. Uh, parent choice as they work, so, uh, uh, I, I think we have to come to terms, it's going to be a trend. And that we educate the best we can with the kids who walk through the front door, and we have the best product that we can for families, and they get to choose. If they want to attend this high school, even if they live in Amherst or, or Mount Vernon, right, so. That's how I would answer it, I, I.
Totally agree, yeah, yeah, to the extent we can know, if, if there's criticisms about, oh, Mike, like, like you've said, Mike, we've heard before. You know, both, so Heagans not for me, for whatever reason, you know, if we're still hearing that. You know, that's something we can maybe look at inside and see what, why do they think that, if it's for their own personal reasons, that nothing to do with us, then. So, you know, so be it, that's the way people are living their life, so, just, it's just data. Um, okay, um, I have a few more, um, just a, just a note about the SAT prep classes, which I said last time, I, I really love that you're doing this. Please keep doing it, maybe do it for PSAT as well, because that has ramifications, I just, just was reading through it, I. You, you chose the word targeted for students, and I just think maybe the word selected. Um, just in this day and age, targeting could be sort of a scary word, so that's just a, a feedback comment.
Appreciate it.
Um, the, uh, the, yeah, you're welcome, the hiring, um. The, uh, co-facilitation for the team, I, I like that includes all of these people, I'm wondering, especially for the dean of students, whether it makes any sense? Or if you've given consideration for having some student leaders as a part of that team?
Yep, we have three students on the team, um, we have three, uh, we do have three students on the team. We met this week, they are wonderful, and, uh, they were already very active participants, um, so, yes.
Great. Uh, and then my final pieces are just about the course selection. One is a comment, do the comment first, um, you, you say that the. You know, students' choices largely drive the creation of our master schedule, uh, when I hear that, I think, well, so long as. We, the adults are curating a meaningful rigorous list for them to choose from, I mean, we, so I guess I. The question or the comment on there is, we're, we're curating a, a meaningful rigorous list, so that what they choose, whatever they choose from the list is. Is going to, uh, be rigorous enough, is going to have the academic, um, uh, you know, force that we've, that we, we insist upon.
Ah, absolutely, the, the students are choosing from the, from the program of studies.
Right.
Yeah, which is absolutely the list that we believe, um.
So, so, yeah, so the point is, if the, maybe this is for public, uh, clarification for people who in the public is, you know. Students' choice is important, but we're not, you know, they have a list of whatever they choose, we're confident, whatever they choose from that list, they're going to, to, um. Have a rigorous experience, um, no matter what it is that they choose.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, and then the, sort of the question about the course selection process, and maybe there's a, a good reason for this, but I. You know, course selection, I think, was due last week, but the counselor meetings are in February, so is that? Is that an opportunity for students in consultation with their counselors to fine-tune and, and change their initial requests?
Yeah, uh, yeah, so it depends on the grade level, um, so some students' course selections were due already, and some are happening right now. Um, some of that's a function of where students are, so, uh, students are having, count all. Tenth grade students are meeting with their counselors as they are doing course selection. Um, for juniors, we front-load that for them a little bit more, so they do, uh, they do course selection in a little bit more of an independent manner. Kind of guided with the pre-group meetings, and then counselors follow up afterwards. Um, it's really a function of, uh, what's feasible, right, we only, we only have X amount of counselors, and to see all kids at the same time. In a really short period of time doesn't work out, um, but so, yes, they will meet with them afterwards, and they have met in, in large groups. Prior to, and then those individual meetings are happening, um, like I said, at the tenth, at the tenth grade level, and the ninth grade level. And they will happen at the eighth grade level in February.
Okay, and so if, if, if there was initial, so I guess this will be then for the upperclassmen. Um, who've made their selections before those meetings, so if there is. If there's a, a, oh, wow, yeah, yeah, I should have done this and not that, there's still an opportunity for some adjustments to be made.
Yes, the counselors review all the selections, and, uh, any concerns get flagged. Um, so if there's a specific concern, they get flagged by the counselor, and even if there isn't a specific concern, they're still following up.
Okay, that's great, thank you, I appreciate it, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, in the reports you see is also treasurer's report, facilities report, just want to say thank you to CJ and to Roger for those. I don't know if anyone had questions or comments on that, real quick. Moving on, nutrition services update, there was quite a, a, a letter in there. Um, it, is there anyone's specific questions, or did someone want to speak to it at all, I mean, for us? There were suggestions, um.
I had one.
Yes, go ahead.
When it talks about this repair for a steamer. It costs thirteen hundred dollars, so I'm one thinking, when we look for a new steamer, maybe we should find one with a more local manufacturer, if that's an option. But I get that we have to fix it, obviously, and the, moving the oven up to be purchased now, because the other one, um, failed. Are those, and does anyone know if those are included in the shortfall, like, is that, are those two costs part of the? Thirty-five thousand instead of fifteen thousand?
Funding source on those.
Yeah, the, the, um, replacing the oven was, was budgeted for, because.
I thought it was budgeted for the following year, though.
But there was also much budgeted for this year, um, that we weren't expecting to have to use, because she found an oven in the anniv.
Right.
But now.
So we can use the budgeted model.
So that's, that is not part of the shortfall, the thirteen hundred presumably is part of the shortfall.
Okay. Um. Want anyone else to have questions on the, on the letter, um, so, yeah, the shortfall, it, it, it's, you know, significant. It was unexpected.
Yep.
Um, the reimburse, the, the federal reimbursement rate decrease.
Yep.
That's significant, twelve cents per breakfast, thirty-seven cents per lunch, and eight cents per. Re-reduced lunch. Projected loss of thirteen thousand eight sixty-three, and that's just for those, the loss in the reimbursement rates?
Yeah.
Wow. That's not, not, it's not something we could necessarily do a thing about, because it's, we're getting reimbursed on. Um, so, the re, the, uh, the student participation in the lunch program. Is there anything that we've surveyed, talked to students, talked to parents, find out why are the kids not eating the lu-, at lunch anymore? Why are they, I mean, we know kids love to go off campus, go grab their, their dunks, their Starbucks, their, but that's not lunch. But they gotta be eating something, so the question is, what is, is there, do we need to reinvent food that we're serving? Is there something, like, have we done any surveys about that, I don't know, if anyone else has a question?
I, I can tell you, ever since I've been in secondary education. The lunch program does not produce a profit, and anywhere I've ever been. It's really difficult to, at the high school level, convince kids to, to purchase lunch. Um, it's a growing trend that I will tell you also, uh, all the things that Crystal said in her report. Open campus, you know, the ability to move around. That maybe the outdated furniture is not as inviting, but I don't, I think that's a lower-level piece, what it comes down to is, uh, for me. Kids, it's a choice, and what you have now is, and this is a, and, and this is a compliment to high school students, high school students. Eat very particularly, some eat far more healthily, you know, some eat not healthy, there's extremes, right? And we have students who, when they have choice, like, hey, can I go get that well-balanced lunch meal? Or can I go to, you know, dunks, or Chipotle, or, or somewhere else, right, to get their stuff? They're, they're going to be very mindful of what they want, uh, it, I think, over the, into the nineties to the two thousands, kids kind of. Had stayed on campus, they ate what was produced for them, and they weren't that mindful of what they were putting in their body either way. I will say, this generation of high school kids in the last, you know, five to seven to eight years, for me, they are very mindful, you have a lot of people who eat. Vegetarian, you have people who eat certain, you know, diets where they put stuff in, you have people who eat vegan, it is, and all culminating with all the reasons Crystal said. And they're a little bit healthier, high school kids, and so you see a lot of food prepped at home, that's whole foods. Vegetables, fruits that they make, and, uh, and I think that's something, but yeah, I think, you know, there could be, uh, a. A student-led initiative, you know, around that to find a little bit more information if we wanted, but those are my reasons, as being a high school principal.
Yeah.
And then, and seeing, seeing this report.
I, I think, uh, i- in this last year specifically, Crystal's done a lot to get student feedback on some of the food. Like, we know kids are going to Chick-fil-A, we know kids are going here, so she's, you know, brought in other options to mimic those.
Domino's.
Experiences, Domino's Pizza, um, the kids, as long as they can go off campus, they're gonna go off campus. And it will include eating off campus, and they're not necessarily going to get lunch, but they're going to just be in a different setting. So as long as that's an option available to them, it's an option that I think they're going to exercise.
Yep, but I mean, when you compare it last year to this year, it's like a thousand lunches less per month, or over a thousand.
Thirty percent drop in November.
It's significant, so.
What cuts are we making to coincide with the lower demand?
Yeah.
So, she, um.
Crystal's office is actually here at the high school, which is helpful, um, so she's working with the kitchen manager to. You know, use what's in the freezer, and, um, you know, try to adjust meals to, um. Be as lower cost as they can, but it's, it, it's difficult, because a lot of this. Is driven by this participation, um, in the Amherst School District, for example, they're actually running a surplus right now. So, um, and they have a large surplus that they have built up over the last few years, so it, it's. Um, I think a lot of it is due to, you know, what Crystal has said, and, you know, we have a, um. A wonderful and unique advisory program, but a lot of, there's a lot of food, um, happening during that. And students aren't accessing, um, lunch all the time either, so.
That's, I'm so glad you mentioned that to me, because that's another thing Crystal and, uh, Crystal and. Um, school personnel have worked on this year is, there is a lot of food that happens during advisory, right? Like, share, breaking bread with people, great way to connect, so we've been doing real intentional. We've been doing real intentional outreach to advisories to have those meals. Come from the cafeteria. Um, not just because it's helpful, but because it's also an equity builder for us because. Yeah, we might want to order out as an advisory, but there's might be, there's likely a kid in there that. Does not have the money to order out from an advisory, but they get lunch provided by the school and if we're providing the lunch, then we're able to do that for them, so. We're trying, we're trying to um, build that as well and Mark and um, Crystal have been really helpful for that.
One, one other thing to address your comments, Stephen, is we did just receive the fourth round of a supply chain grant. Um, so that will be applied. Uh, it's specific only to. A non-perishable uh, foods, so we usually will apply it to milk and produce. Um, but we will be able to apply that and by doing that, we can reduce some of our food costs. So it helps.
Just a reminder, the National School Lunch Program is probably one of the most heavily regulated areas of our operations. They dictate what you can charge, what you can serve, your portion size, ingredients, health and. They in the business side of it, they don't get to charge or have health benefits commensurate with it, right? The health benefits are outside of the organization. So it's very, very difficult. To sell enough, I always say to sell enough tater tots to run a profit in a school system. Especially with the headwinds here. And one of the things that when I arrived here, remember, we were grass-fed beef. So Heagan was a grass-fed beef place, the the cost per meal was incredibly high. Um, commodities weren't part of our practices. And they are more not completely part of it. We're doing a lot of farm-to-school. We are, Crystal is on it, she is into it, um, she's trying innovation. So it is one of the things, there is a high school in New Hampshire that left the National School Lunch Program. And that means you can charge and serve whatever you want because. The competition in that high school was so strong. To go to Chick-fil-A, to go to Five Guys, to go to all these, that it wasn't even close. So they left the National School Lunch Program. Charged more, served better. And tried to convince the kids to do it. There's only one that did it and Crystal, I'm not sure if they still did it, but when I was, this has always been a problem. But here, there's some headwinds that involved, you know, the unfair competition. Allowing that you can go to Chick-fil-A versus a nationally regulated lunch program. Even though Mark does a great job and Crystal does a great job, it is next level, but it's not Chick-fil-A.
So Steve, I have a question. Maybe nobody knows the answer, but it might be fun to know is if we were to subsidize or pay for our own. Free reduced lunch, so obviously we would still want to feed the kids if we if we did leave the program, we still want to feed the kids who would qualify.
Yes.
What would that number be?
That you charge?
No, what's the number that we receive?
Right, so you still serve the lunch, you don't get the subsidy.
No, no, I know, I mean. Like, how much is it?
What would be the cost to us if we choose to absorb those, like we go off the National Lunch Program, we'd have to still provide lunch?
Correct.
What's the subsidy we receive from the federal government and what would we offset?
Yeah, we can find that out.
Not an emergency.
No, no, I love this. The exact, we ran the numbers, my path, we were very little, we weren't so he, we were very little. And um, you know, this is Amy and I battle. If like, I've never put money to fund the fund, the deficit in food service in the budget. We put fifteen thousand dollars in the budget to hedge. General fund hedge, it's always been out of fund balance. Always because I've always, we like Mount Vernon, we fight about Mount Vernon, same thing. And Amherst. But it is, you know, I they Amy doesn't sleep well because you're going to cover it with fund balance, you want a fund balance, you want a deficit appropriation, so we've done, we. We look, because we were unionized. And we looked at outsourcing. And a lot of school districts went to outsourcing the labor portion of this to Cafe, have you ever heard of Cafe Services? Cafe Services does um, a lot of universities, so Cafe Services was trying, and also you know what they were doing, they were cutting health insurance. So at the ethical pieces, oh, you're not in the union, but that means Cafe Service is going to cut their costs by not allowing health insurance, it's working one of the numbers required. But it's it, Crystal and I had the chat uh, just briefly about this, because it's an interesting math problem. But here, it's very similar. I didn't have Chick-fil-A pressure because I was forty minutes from Chick-fil-A, couldn't get there at lunch. Um, we had one little local pizza project, but we have Chick-fil-A pressure. We have um. A lot, I I I've seen DoorDash, well, used, I don't know if it used to come, I don't know if it still does.
No, we we said they can't order.
But the old days, but there was a time. And I'm not trying to, it's just an interesting piece, but Crystal's on it, she's into it, she's good at this stuff and she's concerned, but we can run some numbers.
Yeah.
And we can see if London, well, sorry, that other school district is.
So the other, the other thing I wonder is if we could look at. How the price is comparing on not, not so much the main meal. But on the cookies. I say that one because my daughter bought a lot of cookies. Um, you know, the sports drinks, the, you know, the things that. Like, there's not a reason if 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 we're going to sell a Gatorade, for example, that we are half the price of a Gatorade. Down the road. Um, you know, for those kind of. Elective, not nutritionally required foods. Um, and I don't know, maybe we already are very competitive on those, but I think we could look at, look at that.
I got something to throw into that mix as well.
Hold on, hold on.
Amy's talking. I apologize.
Bad, we need to get her a speaker.
Yeah, no worries. No, um, we did increase all the cart prices this year, but certainly it's something we can, you know, run some comps again and take a look at that. She is actively looking at other ways to in- increase revenue, so looking at vending machines, she's gone on some site visits to other. Um, other food service programs and is talking to some other folks who are running. Successful high school programs to to see what she can incorporate.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. John, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I I I've mentioned this before various times over the years, but it seems apropos now. I mean, it seems like something we could. Potentially do. Is integrate students into the lunch-making process, maybe through wellness program or something like that. Um, so if they had a steak and a say and what the menu were was and then the part of the participation in the preparation. That may be an organic way to stimulate more interest, um, if the students were had a role in the preparation and serving of the lunch. Thoughts on that from the administration?
It's hard to get them to compost right now. I don't know if I can get them to make lunch, but. Um. Yeah, I think when kid, I think I think the the point that you're making is so valid and important, which is. We can't do something to the kids or for the kids, we have to do it with them. And so. And and so and so that and so that matters.
Yeah, and it's part of our, sort of part of the Sohegan culture, I mean, if there was a nutrition section in a wellness class, for example, why wouldn't that not? Part of the assessment, the final assessment be serve a lunch. You know, is is that unreasonable to to integrate something like that even into the curriculum? So it just becomes part of the programatics and everyone at some point in time in their career is going to have to be part of making and serving a lunch.
I'm sure it's something they could look into, John, but it could be on their radar to look into. The question would be the food safety wise to what type of training.
Certainly, yes, I I understand that, obviously. You know, hot, sharp things in a kitchen, there's a lot of rules and regulations about that, uh, safety would have to be thought through. This is not something to do tomorrow, but. I'd like. To continue to think about how it might work and then decide if it's if it's feasible or not.
So if if I may, what what's the game plan from here going forward with this? I mean, just evaluating. Clearly doesn't seem like it's enough, so are we directing her to? Be a little bit more strategic with cuts and trying to trim down costs?
Yeah, she is um, working very, very closely.
Yeah, yeah, so as I said, you know, it's it's fortunate that her office is here, so. She's working hand-in-hand with the kitchen manager to both try to increase revenue and cut expenditures.
Because from my perspective, I mean, the recommendations here about upgrading and incorporating more access, like. That just adds more cost to to the program to create a bigger deficit.
Yeah, I think she just didn't include. Some of her in her initial par- in in her initial paragraph of what she's doing, so yes, it's. Um, it's an active conversation and active work that's happening and our goal is to. Have that uh, deficit not be as high, certainly before the end of the year.
Okay.
Probably worth having a follow-up on this in a couple months or every month, maybe just see where we are and make sure we're.
Historically, we we had deficits before COVID and before the government gave us more money for meals and stuff, what was? Was this similar to what those were? You know, pre- pre-COVID or?
Twenty-two, it was about um. Twenty, hold on, I had it. Last, last year, it was about eighteen thousand. Um, and the year prior. It was. Twenty-seven thousand.
So I think we're going back to like eighteen, seventeen, sixteen. So is that the number that you're talking about?
Um, I can get that.
So so is this the case that we're kind of returning to a norm?
I want to say it's always around thirty-ish, wasn't it, Amy? Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, we, of course, we support, you know, creativity and finding flexibility in like the other car program, but. You know, this is, I don't want to brush it off because it is a lot of money, but if we can cut it, it would be great. But we got to understand that this is historically where we're normally. Find ourselves this time of year or at the end of the year, so.
And I can get some historical data. Um, for the next meeting, all right, yeah, we can.
Yep, absolutely.
Since we are, okay. Anything else from anyone? All right. Thank you very much for that information. Um, community council update, Izzy.
Hello. So first, starting off, I want to speak on a visitor that we had to counsel. His name is Jack Jacob Hess, um, and he is the principal from Campbell High School. Um, he had the opportunity to interview multiple council members and sit in on a council meeting. Um, he came with the goal of creating a more democratic environment at Campbell. Um, and it's just always good to see that other people want what we have at our school. Um, currently. Or through this past month, we had the out-of-school consequence proposal moved through, which did end up being um, declined. The. Concept of this proposal is that the school is prohibited from giving any consequences for actions outside of school. And the main concerns with this were um, tying the hands of council with the bylaws of anything that is unbecoming of a council member. But as well as other organizations and the problematic wording um. In the proposal that was formally discussed in our last meeting last month. Um, and. The proposal that we are working on right now is getting rid of student of the month formally. Um, student of the month was very difficult to get people to participate in. It was, its goal was to recognize students for following the Sohegan Six and being a great representative. Of what that means to our school. Um, but. A lot of students um, were, we heard reports that students were either embarrassed by it, by being called out in front of their entire school. Or um, that they just didn't really care for it. Um, and getting people to actually vote in that Google form was kind of. Like Dana and I discussed earlier, a little bit like pulling teeth. Um, so this year, uh, we stopped doing the student of the month. But this proposal is with the intentions of ending student of the month formally. As well as giving fidelity to not letting past proposals just fade away, but properly end them. If there are any questions, I will take them.
I was at that meeting, I say it was, it was a good meeting because there was a lot of. Thought behind it, wasn't just, let's get rid of this. It was. The, you know, here's where the students thought, where they felt, and it was also, one of the issues was. Um, the original proposal didn't have any. I any information on how to evaluate and how to vote on and and propose, it was just like, let's do this. But didn't say how they were going to do it and how they were going to vote, so they said, not that we're against student of the month, like if you want to bring, if someone's interested in bringing it back. Let's evaluate the full proposal and that is, has proper methods in it. Um, so it was, it was a good conversation.
Yeah.
But it hasn't been voted on yet.
Right.
Not there yet. Anything for Izzy? No. Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. Um, I'm going to move up and. Is there anything, Jeannie, you want to bring up about Sohegan Finance Committee at all? We are good for deliberative. I know we had a final meeting last week where you voted on. All the Warren articles to. Yes, please, yes. You just got to press the button.
Oh, you nailed it.
A miracle.
Yes, hi, everybody. Um, I um, I did have one question beforehand, it always. Happens when I'm here because you talk about things that are so fascinating. Um, is there any data that talks about um, the impact of? I guess the word is vouchers. Um, you know, the the education funding in the state of New Hampshire that. Is allowing folks to get funding for. Private and religious schools.
So you're asking specifically whether Sohegan students have taken funding and left Sohegan or just?
Wonder if if that particular thing, if you can find data that would indicate um, whether that's had an impact on their enrollment. Don't know if you have that.
I haven't looked at uh, it recently, but in years past, it wasn't substantial. For the vouchers, but we can look into it. Um, some, to your point, Jeannie, there's been a lot of conversation and debate, I'm sure you've been part of it, like. And and people heard about it, like, how many P kids are in public schools and not in public schools and. There's conflicting data floating around the state for for that and, you know, so the D O E will put out a report. The Principal's Association will put out a report, the Superintendent's Association will put out a report, newspapers will run. Articles based on one report, then a couple of weeks later, they'll run other articles on that, and so uh, it is definitely. Uh, something that is being discussed at 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 a variety of different levels around that, but. We can, it's particularly to your point about the vouchers, we'll look into that. Um, and, but I, it it is kind of unprecedented, the 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 way people are. Are, you know, educating their children throughout New Hampshire right now. It's it's very unique compared to. Other states.
That's, that's pretty much what you said, is that there are many more choices now, and I think. Um, parents are afforded more choices because there is funding, so. Um, I just want to make sure that people understand that that's a factor that. Could potentially erode um, public school education.
The data was, Jeannie, and I think Dan can speak to, the vast majority of the E F A, the Education Freedom Account vouchers. Went to students already out of public school. It wasn't, it wasn't a mover, it was really a a compensation for those who already made the choice to go to private school. Vast majority. I'm not saying all of them.
No, but it was like, it was in the seventies, it was like seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six percent.
Yeah.
Were already out of public school that chose to take it.
Okay.
That was last year.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to to talk briefly because the only time that we really got to talk was um. At the public hearing and um, I, we have since um, met, we met on January twenty-fifth to actually vote. On all of the articles. Um, and I just want to remind the public. Of um, what the role of the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee. Um, is um, so that they understand um, that it's to provide independent due diligence into the budgeting process and outcomes. To ensure that all costs are reasonable and justified and all options for the delivery of a quality education expected by the citizens of. Amherst and Mount Vernon are thoroughly evaluated. All of our work is designed to enable the taxpayers of Amherst and Mount Vernon to feel confident. That the budget has been thoroughly reviewed. And that our recommendation is trusted. And the Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee worked very diligently this year to scrutinize the proposed budget. Line by line. Um, but also look beyond the surface to understand um, any new initiatives. We were committed to not only vet the proposed budget numbers, but also to look deeper at what those dollars. Were being spent on and whether they were an efficient use of tax dollars toward improving teaching and learning. Um, we found the increase of one point two percent um. In the operating budget to be minimal and justified and agreed unanimously that we could support the budget as a whole. In addition, after carefully reviewing the proposed teacher support staff. Um, contract, the PPC agreement and its tax impact, we all felt it was a well-crafted and fair compromise that we could support unanimously. In addition, we unanimously voted to support each of these Warren articles being presented by the board for the following reasons. Um, first, these articles meet the recommendation. First, these articles meet the recommendations that have historically been made by the Finance Committee that the administration and board create long term plans to meet the needs for upkeep and maintenance of the facilities, as well as to start a fund to replace aging technology and expand our internal transportation system in order to save transportation costs. Secondly, the board has chosen to fund these items with the unassigned fund balance so as not to burden the taxpayer further. And for that us, that makes it easy to support. So the Warren articles that we supported unanimously were Article Four, the School Maintenance Fund, Article Five, Turf Field Replacement Fund, Article Six, the Technology Fund, and Article Seven, the Vehicle Vehicle Fund, I don't know, we're adding vehicles. And then in conclusion, I just wanted to say that the Finance Committee supports the goals that the Sohegan Board has established to focus on high quality instructional time as a way of improving achievement and student success. We continue to support a high level, multi-year forecast as critical in assessing the current year budget and informing voters on the adequacy of the current year budget. We continue to encourage the board and administration to survey all of the stakeholders on a regular basis in order to identify areas for improvement. So it was a good year. You know, our our job was made easier by the, you know, the support of the board and Amy Facy, of course, and Mike Berry and Steve Shaverlin in helping us answer all the questions that we had. So we we appreciate very much your help in that way.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate the work of the Finance Committee because they they did a lot of digging. They did a lot, so we appreciate working collaboratively.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it. We will see you at deliberative. Briefly, are there any committee updates that someone wants to go over, anything from policy or anything, anything from Mount Vernon?
Of course.
Of course, please go.
It's been a busy couple of months. So I actually have Mount Vernon Strategic Plan, I'm about to hit send to everyone. So you can actually see it, we'll include it in the minutes as well. It's going to be formally presented coming up at Town Hall. It's been approved and it's ready for public consumption. And then the town will start to adopt it, I believe, at town meeting this year. The next thing is is the Mount Vernon Division of our school boards. The Mount Vernon School Board, as well as myself, are going to be meeting with the public up in Mount Vernon on Saturday, February the seventeenth, as a meet and greet to talk to your school board members and review our budget, answer any questions that may be there. It'll be from ten thirty until twelve, we'll serve donuts and have and have some coffee. So that's that, and I think that's it for Mount Vernon.
Thank you.
Ten thirty, yeah, you guys don't have to be there. Last time it was a couple of there and then Pim and myself.
Thank you very much. Anything else? We're going to work on getting a date, I got to look at our, probably do it at our library. And we'll do a date for Amherst as well to go over the budget for questions and stuff. We'll do that before the March vote. Anything? I'm not going to go through each and everyone, okay. Just the board discussion on deliberative session, I think it we're all planned out. I'll be speaking, John will be speaking, and Dan Vaillou will be speaking. We just met with the moderator and he's got the flow. The presentation is in a really good draft form. Everyone can go out and look at it now if you want, and I think that's about it. So six o'clock on Tuesday. For us here, down in the theater.
So just, did you get the email I sent you about?
I did.
So if we can try to incorporate some of that language with regards to our Warren article on the teacher salaries? There was just a resident had emailed in asking for more clarification in terms of how the raises being applied to various sort of steps.
Okay, I saw that, yeah, Amy put me on that.
So if we can incorporate some of that language in there, that would be awesome.
I'm going to be speaking to that now because unfortunately Christie's not able to make it.
Oh, okay.
So I'll make sure to include that, so thank you.
Great. And then now when it comes to the Warren articles in terms of the no tax impact comment, if we can make sure that we emphasize that there's no additional tax impact comment because the funds have already been raised. And the impact is actually, it's not going back to the community to reduce the tax rate. So when we get up there, some people have mentioned to me specifically the person emailed that it's not an accurate statement that there's no tax impact. It's there's no additional tax impact because the funds have already been raised.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So John, did you understand that?
Yeah, I understand that. And I appreciate the point.
Yeah, this has come up quite a bit in the Mount Vernon deliberative sessions over the past few years. So what we say, and I think the language is actually in the Warren article where it says no new taxation. So that language is actually in there, so that it's helpful to use that term. Okay.
My just have a comment on the deliberative slides, I'll be reviewing them again in their current form. But just want to make sure that, like what what Jeannie was saying about, you know, having long term plans. I I'd like us to be precise with what what the years of the plans are and if there were any changes to any of those years from previous presentations that we have a reason for those. It felt like sort of last time at the public hearing, there were some disconnects with what I had understood and and what was on some of the slides. So just as a foreshadowing, I'll be going through those here in the next couple of days. And may have some clarifying questions about that.
All right, ask me if you do, John, I should be able to answer them.
Okay.
I'll go back and look at them to make sure it's clear.
Okay.
Cool. Public input, two of two, there's nobody in the room, is there anyone online? One person online, if you are interested in speaking, please raise your hand and we will promote you to a panelist. See? All right.
While we're waiting, I want to thank you for the effort that you put into those, that deck. It clearly took a lot of time to write all that stuff up, and I'm sure Amy helped quite a bit as well.
Yeah, Amy was.
So.
Huge help, yes.
Clearly, a lot of content in there, a lot of sort of difficult language for some people in the community to absorb. So thank you for for that. So, my show. Are we able to talk about any of the issues or are we going to put it on a future agenda item about some of the board notes?
I had the same question.
The old future things to talk about?
No, 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 stuff that was in the board notes.
The content that that were in there.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
So I know it's not warned, so are we? Do you want to do it? Because there are definitely some things about the school's start times that I would like to see if we can, I know you're asking for feedback there. The impact fees, I would love to get an update on the right to know requests, like I kind of want to want to understand sort of the background of the content. Is it way that we could just put that out there or is it more specific and more unique? And then obviously the van update, that was pretty decent, and then the skylight replacement.
Yeah.
I know, there there's a lot of the content there is is stuff that I wanted to dive into.
Yeah, I mean, we should probably put them as an update. I mean, I mean, I can give you an update on the impact fees. If that's okay. The impact fees, the town's lawyer came back and asked for some RSA justifications that we would need to make. One of them being is to ensure that whatever work we are going to do is directly related to new development in the town. And I'm not comfortable saying I can, I can absolutely justify that the science lab work is due to new development in the town. So I asked Amy to say we probably just disappointed decline the impact fees. Because there, I think that's not a can't prove that.
I I read that as well, and so again, not a worn thing. But is there a way that we can look for another project that would meet that criteria? Because these dollars go back to the developer. And it's not like it goes back to the taxpayer. The developer built a community of houses in this in this area. You know, the the community should benefit from that that bank instead of it just going back. So if we can find or identify a growth oriented type project, I I think that would be warranted.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, not a worn thing.
Thank you, yeah. I just, I I perfectly just said I'm I'm not comfortable in that justify.
I understand.
That piece. But yeah, I think we should put the rest of those on.
And that and that could be a variety of things. I mean, I don't know, I don't know exactly what it would be, but I mean, even you know, look, the numbers, you know, are trending back up because of development and therefore we need more, I don't know, furniture. We need to replace things that otherwise we could have been pulling from another location. I mean, it's it's not necessarily, you know, we got to build something new, it could be almost.
It has to be for planning though, right? It can't be for.
Or is it just for planning?
It has to be new, it has to be. There's actually a lot of rules. So when you're ready to talk about it, let me know and I can, I actually have a slide deck that I prepared for Amherst and for you guys, so throw that on.
Maybe we could put that on the next.
Years, but yeah, yeah, maybe like maybe March or April.
Because I'd like to have a better understanding of that because I think I think there's a ways we maybe can be creative, but I could be wrong on that too because I am not that.
It's very complex, and the town actually had to hire a consultant to help them to craft what their policy was. So there's there's a lot of rules and regulations around it and.
I just want to make sure we're not, there's not a stopwatch ticking in the background that's imminent, so.
Six years, so.
But from when?
Have some time. Oh, I think we're only in year two.
Okay.
But so here's my thought is it's a good conversation to have maybe March, April at the latest.
Well, now they just heard that, we got four years, so.
But I'm just thinking we're going to start developing the budget for next year. And if there's things we want to think about, that we need the impact fees for to develop for the following, like, yep, you know, it's two years out from now. You're now four years into it, no one coming close.
Yep. So it might be worth having that presentation so we can collaborate on. And we could look also at the science labs down the road on on, you know, when we have the presentation, does it fit within those? I mean, again, is there a need for this that otherwise we could be working within the existing structures or other structures or get, I don't know, but I mean.
It it's tying it tying this need to new development.
New development, yeah, I understand.
There was another request, a requirement that we're fine with, meaning like it has to have a useful life of over X number of years. So so like the furniture probably, that's what, it probably doesn't work.
Right, okay.
Because it has to be for.
Right, putting solar panels in the building as a result of growth.
That likely would.
So stuff like that.
Yep, yep. Yeah, that might be a great presentation, conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Can I ask what the bulk of the right to know requests are are, like what the topic is? Since that seems like, I think, something, we're getting a lot of them, forty-one from one person?
Lot of right to know requests on a variety of topics from minutes to agendas to financials, emails, social media activity. It is incredibly time consuming. And it's it's something that we have to do and we're going to continue to do, but it's a it's a heavy lift on the staff at the S U and all departments.
And we are charging for that, correct? For record keeping costs?
Only a few.
Okay.
But it's it's a lot of time, right, when they're trying to develop strategic plan and vision and finance.
So we'll just, we'll continue to plug away at it. I thought you should be aware.
Hey, Mike, on that, is there anything among all of that that it would would be useful for our data collection and longitudinal evaluation work? Like, you know, like, oh, somebody's asking for, I don't know, budgets, for example. Is it something like, oh, well, if we're looking at this, it's actually helpful, we can fill in some gaps in our in our historical rear view mirror to help inform us about what we might do in the future. So is there anything useful you're seeing in there that, even though it's a pain in the butt to to address all of those? Is there any value, silver lining in digging through all that stuff that we could use to help us in our decision making going forward, do you think?
No, I would I would certainly say not in the B A or the Finance Department's world. I would say probably not with some of the requests regarding minutes and communications and some of the stuff that could be seen as meaningful. It's nothing that hasn't been done as as part of our work through, you know, planning, entry plan work, visioning work, you know, things have been done that happen naturally. And so, you know, fair question, but the work is being done, you know, in in other realms that that would be considered, you know, possibly useful. So, you know, that's how, that's where I'm at right now with that.
Okay. I'd just like to echo everyone else's comment about more discussion on the impact fees. And the only thing to add to that would be the specific rationale for why the science labs is is the opinion is that it's not connected to new development, just to see what the reasoning is specifically as part of the briefing on that in March or April.
All right.
By the way, could I just add a couple more thoughts on that since we're we're talking? On the van, my question is, you know, we're looking to purchase it out of fund balance. If those funds are unavailable, then canceled without a fee was.
You are no longer being heard.
Yeah, but these topics aren't warranted, so we really should be engaging in a conversation.
Put them on the next.
Yeah, I added them to the list for the next agenda.
Okay. John?
We have like a minute, you know, like any updates or questions superintendent or something?
Yeah.
Superintendent.
Yeah.
At the end of the agenda.
Yeah, we can, we can add that. John, are you back?
Oh.
Are you back? He's muted.
I think he's having some technical problems.
Asking about the the van.
Yeah, so John, hold on a second.
Yeah.
We're going to put these on the next agenda, and the reason we're doing this is because they're not on the current agenda and to having a conversation about it is not necessarily appropriate. But we were just saying that I think each agenda, we need to add a line item about, you know, superintendent report questions or or notes or, we're going to add that for next time, but we're going to.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's worth it, you know, with the, as we are creating the board notes, you know, as as we look as the year goes on, there's a number of general updates that are coming. And it's definitely, the board notes look look lengthier than in, say, October or September. And that's just a credit to the work that the board's doing and the work that's happening throughout the district. And so I do think putting an agenda line, you know, on a item on the the next agenda would be wise. So we'll look into that, so I I appreciate the conversation.
Okay, I'm I'm totally good with that. A technical question about the repeaters, though, do do we do we know what the range of those things are? Like, do they extend well into the neighborhoods or they do they limit themselves to like the campus or?
Campus.
Campus.
That was the charge was campus.
So it's not going to, it's not going to fill that that black hole across when you cross the river on Boston Post, for example? Or or maybe just? What's that?
All right, so we will definitely make sure we make an adjustment to the agenda. Yeah. So if we don't have any public comments, so the hand has not been raised, I'll take a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one A two C.
Second.
And I need a roll, I need a roll call vote on that.
Vaillou, yes.
Please, Herman, yes. Here's you.
Grund, yes. Okay, yes. Glover.
Glover, Glover, yes.
Thank you. John, hold on, you can stay, Steve will shut it down for you.